Welcome to the March Meeting of the Iredle Stateful Schools Board of Education. We're excited to have all of you here tonight and look forward to presentations of some awards and other recognitions of honors, winners. We generally begin our meeting with a moment of silence and I will ask if each one of you will bow with me as we begin our meeting, meditating in your own way about the business that we have before us, keep in mind the interest of the students in our district. So if you will, let's bow. Thank you. Before we have our pledge of allegiance, let me introduce our ROTC from North Iredle High School is the color guard serving tonight and we have the pledge of allegiance to be led by the East Elementary Mentor Group. So I'll ask if the East Elementary Group wants to come forward and be ready for the pledge as the color guard comes forward.
Mary, colors.
Let's everyone stand, please.
Forward, march. Mark on, march. Color guards, hold. Freeze it, march.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, march. Pride, faith. Forward, march.
Thank you, you see. Mr. Johnson, before we begin our agenda, I'll ask if you have any adjustments.
Yes, sir, Dr. Cash. If you'll look on your agenda at item B, you'll find at your place a new worksheet that shows you the meeting dates for the Board of Education and the COW and we'd like for you to replace that in your board packet. And then down on letter H, the calendar updates, we had, you see a strike through that, but we would like to put that back on the agenda and ask for a vote on that tonight.
So have the item H, that had previously been struck from the agenda, is placed back on the agenda as a voting item. Okay, let's begin then with our, excuse me.
I would like to consider tabling the personnel report until after we have our closed session.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, to table the consent agenda, or actually the personnel portion of the consent agenda until after the meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any pose that motion carries.
Dr. Cash, additionally, I think this applies to all of the policies beginning with I through Z. There said second reading and I think that they were considered at a COW meeting, but the policy 24-20, at least as it's written now, requires that it be actually introduced at one board meeting and then following. We were trying to save some time by doing it that way, but I think the policy, the way it is now, would require it to be presented at a first reading, at a regular board meeting, and then the second reading at another board meeting. So I think those should probably be changed to first readings and I didn't have a chance to say anything to Mr. Armstrong, but I spoke briefly with Dr. Lassane and Dr. Taylor about that.
Okay, so.
Wouldn't that be all of those ladies? Yeah.
So to conform to policy, we need then to make items I through Z first readings.
No. I through U.
Z.
Were V through Z already read or did they come up at a previous board meeting?
Yes, sir.
So these would be the first. So clarification again, Mr. Qday.
Yeah, clarification is that I through U are first reading and that V through Z are second reading as recorded.
So I through U will be first readings, V through Z will be second readings and voting items then.
That's correct.
Let's move on then to, for those following the agenda with us, move on to Roman numeral two for the approval of minutes from the February 1st meeting, which is committee of the whole. In February 8th, the Board of Education meeting minutes. If there are no additions or corrections to the minutes, entertain a motion that we approve those two sets of minutes.
Some of them.
Have the motions of second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion of second by Ms. Bonham. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any pose that a motion carries. So let's move on into our recognition portion of the meeting then. We have the Community Schools Award, Ms. Suzie Wildberg.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. I would like to ask if Ms. Ryan and Mr. Wellman and their students from East Elementary School could come up and I'm hoping that Mr. and Mrs. Hollyfield are in the audience. They are. I am so glad. It's going to take me a minute because I have to do a little prefacing, so bear with me. So everyone knows the road that young people travel can be very rough and part of all of our work is to help guide young people on their rough roads, not only through academics, but also how to play well with others, how to treat people with respect, and how to be leaders. East Elementary School does a fine job with all of those things. Principal Amy Ryan came up with an idea for a student mentor program. Mrs. Ryan noted that there were young men within the school setting that were in need of a chance to participate in a group focusing on the development and growth of social skills, learning from others' experiences, dealing with uncomfortable feelings, and resolving conflicts in an appropriate manner. Mrs. Ryan noted that many children seem to have natural helping abilities to build on, but there are necessary social skills that all children can improve upon. Would you gentlemen mind holding this so people can see it? It's awkward, thank you. The student mentor group focuses on traits of a peer mentor that include setting goals, using effective problem-solving strategies, developing self-control skills, and being responsible for the development of positive relationships within the school and classroom settings. The next step was for these students to work with other students in the school setting to help them develop and grow these same skills while displaying them not only at school, but throughout their daily lives. So the students that are a part of this program have chosen to wear white shirts and ties when going into classrooms to support others, or while supporting the school at school functions, or escorting parents throughout the school on scheduled visiting tours. Now, we all know what an elementary young man can do to a long-sleeved dress shirt and a tie. Well, to the rescue came Helen and Lee Hollyfield, owners of Jenkins Cleaners on Front Street. Jenkins Cleaners has supported East Elementary by cleaning and pressing the shirts and ties of these young men. Helen and Lee are here with us tonight and I hope you will please come forward. They're going to be recognized for their partnership with East Elementary and helping us achieve our goal of turning these young boys into responsible and very well-dressed young men. Now, the students also brought you a gift. That was sort of a surprise today. So we have a whole lot of stuff up here and I'd like to get everybody in a picture together because what you guys did was, I know it seems like it's just something small, but it is not to us and certainly not to them, nor the parents who have to take care of these shirts. So maybe if I can get you guys to maybe put that, let's move over here just a little bit so I can get everybody in here. Mr. Wellman, just take care of this. And let's try to arrange this so I can get everybody in. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And Mr. Johnson, there's a certificate right up here for Jenkins. If you wouldn't mind, I'm sorry, I want to get him in the picture too. Stay right here. You are such a good husband.
Aw, that looks awesome.
Gentlemen, if you could turn around a little bit.
They just, they just, too little. Alright. Next, we have our district spelling bee winner and runner-up, Ms. Kelly Henson.
Good evening. Tonight, we'd like to recognize our students that were the winners and runners-up for the district spelling bee. The Iredle Stateful Schools District Spelling Bee was held February the 4th, 2016 at McGray Auditorium on the campus of Stateful High School. The bee lasted 29 rounds with only the final two spellers remaining in the final 11 rounds. The winner will advance to the regional level of competition held at the Milton Road Center in Winston-Salem, North Carolina on March 20th, 2016. If for some reason the winner cannot attend, the ISS District Spelling Bee runner-up would attend the competition. I would like to recognize the following students who placed first and second at the Iredle Stateful Schools District Spelling Bee Competition. Runner-up Olivia Wall, Harmony Elementary School, and the winner, Anshuman Gupta, Mount Morn School. Mr. Johnson, if you'd like to come forward and congratulate them, are they here?
Next, we have our district science fair winners, Ms. Henson.
Winning science fair projects from ISS District Science Fairs advanced to the Northwestern Regional Science Fair at Appalachian State University in Boone, North Carolina on December the 15th, 2015. Seven of the Iredle Stateful Schools Elementary Science Fair projects received honorable mention at the Northwest Regional Science Fair. Tonight, I would like to congratulate those students. Erica Brinskill, Sharon Elementary; Malika Devilia Hernandez; East Iredle Elementary; Aleah Cruz; East Iredle Elementary; Jackson McClain, Troutman Elementary; Dexter Howe-Davis, Lake Norman Elementary; Lauren Lynch, Sharon Elementary; Zachary Cook, Woodland Heights Elementary; and Ada Saki, Woodland Heights Elementary. If those students would come forward. Mr. Johnson. Two elementary projects from ISS were selected to advance to the North Carolina Science and Engineering Fair at Meredith College on April the 1st and 2nd, 2016. Congratulations to CJ Martino, Woodland Heights Elementary, and James Brandt, Cool Spring Elementary.
Mr. Johnson, if you just want to stay down here.
Junior Division projects were entered in one of six categories with awards given for first, second, and third place and honorable mention in each category. First and second place winners will advance to the state competition at Meredith College. Congratulations to Shantika Ramsing, third place, Mount Morn School; Margaret Gorley, first place, Mount Morn School; Madison Hacker, third place, Brawley Middle; Emily Moore, second place, Mount Morn School; Alan Spywak, second place, Mount Morn School; Cassidy Brandt, first place, Northview School; Nathan Claiborne, second place, Brawley Middle; Jack Baldwin, third place, Brawley Middle. And finally, in the senior division, ISS has one project moving forward to the state competition at Meredith College on April the 1st and 2nd, 2016. This project is in biological science. Congratulations to Devonay Semal and Sid Harth Semal, second place, Lake Norman High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henson. Next, we have the superintendent's art show winners for the middle and high school. Ms. Wildberg.
Well, every year, in conjunction with high school and middle school honors chorus concerts, the winning entries from the superintendent's art contest are displayed. But this year, the pieces were judged, all the pieces were judged by the Director of Iredle Museums, Melinda Herzog. She asked me to never again ask her to do this, but she is very encouraged for long-term sustainability for art galleries because we have some amazingly talented students guided by some amazingly talented teachers. So I have the list of this year's winners and since they know who they are, and I know we have at least one art teacher here, I would like for, when I do the high school, Ms. Fox, I would like for you to come up also. So for first place, Marissa Picamini from Lake Norman; second place, Now Kaninko from Lake Norman; third place, Max O'Connor from Lake Norman. That's our first, second, and third. And our honorable mentions, Lucas Yates from Lake Norman, Jacob Merrick from South, Rachel Simon from Lake Norman, Ashley Valdez from Stateful, Kirsten Clancy, Lake Norman, Molly Clark from South, and Gianna Dana from South. So we have, now is here, and Mr. Johnson, there are, the high school certificates are there and she'll be the second one. And I've got a picture of guests here with her. These works will go into a rotation at the beginning of the school year and they'll all be displayed among the three buildings of the Indy Center, ABR, and Grace Three Houses for the full year. Don't leave that one. You're a very talented young man. Keep it up. It's just beautiful. Thank you. Yes, so are you. And our middle school winners, do we have any middle school art teachers? We have a middle school. Yay! Yay! Okay. First place, Skylar Glenn from, yes, from Lake Shore Middle. Second place, Jordan Calusag from Brawley. Third place is David Willis from Lake Shore Middle. And our honorable mentions, Walker Weatherford from Brawley, Reagan Dixon from North Middle, Madison Barnett from West Middle, Rachel Nicholson, Brawley, Casey Brotherton, Lake Shore, Aidan Brown, Lake Shore, and Davion Mathis, West. Yay!
That concludes our recognition portion of the meeting and appears that we're losing a lot of our audience, but again, congratulations to all of you all. A lot of hard work. We're glad you took some time to come and let us recognize you. As they're leaving, let's go ahead and begin our non-consent agenda. We have the report out of the Iredle Stateful Schools and the foreign exchange program. Ms. Qday and Mr. Jimmy Elliott.
All members, thank you for letting us come out and tell you just a little bit about the exchange program. On January the 24th through the 26th, we had 153 Chinese students, 10 teachers from China, and then also 10 chaperones to show up down at Katz, which was a perfect place to bring them in. If you remember those dates, that's when the snowstorm hit and it was just, we were very fortunate to be able to come into Katz, bring those students inside to be able to meet those host families there. We had 84 different host families throughout Iredle County that hosted these 153 students and teachers. We had 91 that were eligible at the end. There at the very end, we had quite a few people who really wanted to come onboard, but we simply ran out of students and it was good to have those extras and to know that people were still interested in being host families. Those students then went to all of our seven high schools. They also went to four of the middle schools, including CCTL and VPAC. If y'all remember those days too, we were out of school for snow, so our host families got to really get to know those host students for two days before they went to school on Wednesday. And when they went, that's when our schools took over and folks, you would be very proud of what your high schools and middle schools did. Our students, we had well over 200 students from high schools and middle schools who were called a shadow student and they basically helped those students around each and every day and they became very familiar with those Chinese students as they come in and then also helped the teachers. But 200 students from Iredle County got to know students from China and they also, the things we keep hearing is the cultural exchange that went on was both ways. Our students learned quite a bit from them, but they also learned quite a bit from us too. Our school, our high schools were very hospitable in that they let them come in and in any activities that was going on at night, those Chinese students and their host families were able to get into those events free. It was right there at the end of basketball season and of course, North Iredle was doing real well in basketball, so we did have quite a few students from China who did go to basketball games and different events too, whether it be theater events or anything else going on in our high schools, they were able to visit those and those host families went with them. To let you know though too, we had 21 host families that had no children in Iredle Stateful Schools. So I want you to start noticing how the community started coming back to Iredle County Schools, seeing what was going on. seeing what was going on. So that was very important. We also had multiple churches, as many as 10 or 12, who helped feed students. They helped find housing for students. So we, I couldn't get over the amount of people that came in from the community to help us host these Chinese students and teachers while they were here, and we're very glad to do that. They loved the experience. Those host families were compensated whenever they were here. That is something different that TBI does that you don't hear a lot from other companies. So I was very thankful because they took them wherever they could. They went to the Pitt down in Mooresville. They went to Hornets games. They went to Carolina games. I'm glad they got to see a good team play, and didn't take them to any Duke games that I know of. Sorry about that, Max, but you have to say that. But they did take them all over in places here in Iredale County and then also in North Carolina. Our New Year's, the Chinese New Year event took place on February the 6th, and that was at Statesville High School, and you had probably 700 people or more that came in. We did see quite a few of you folks there that night. I was very thankful that you were there to experience that, but I hope you got to see how important it was for the community to see what was going on and learn from them. And our own Jennifer McLean was an MC, and she did a great job, along with the hosts from China. 1.2 billion people got to see the name of Iredale Stateful Schools because that was streamed over in China, and they interviewed a few parents and host families that night, and they were celebrities for 1.2 billion people for well over five minutes in the news. So I thought that was great to get Iredale Stateful Schools some exposure there. We also had a Valentine dance down at Katz. Again, the very, it was a good place to have that. You know, the Chinese folks were a little concerned about if their children would dance. Well, they did the YMCA, and they did everything else, and it was good to see American kids and Chinese students get out there and dance and just had a good time. It was a good social. Cookies were provided by the culinary class down at Katz, so there were many different areas from Iredale Stateful Schools that come in while we were hosting those students We did take information that we got from surveys. We surveyed host families, students, teachers, and we did learn a lot. There was a sharp learning curve for those three weeks and for this whole program. We hope that this will continue, and we're able to put some practices in in the future that will make this even better. But folks, I just hope that you will see how much of the community helped in this whole endeavor and how much they got to see what was going on in Iredale Stateful Schools. I'll turn it over to Ms. Cutay.
And how much more can I add? Except, I would like to share with you a comment from a student from China and his shadow partner. Michael was one of everybody's favorites because Michael just was one of those personalities that goes out and gets it. And if you read the interview in the paper, he is one of the students who did go to North Iredale, and he was asked what were some of his favorite firsts. And he said number one was, he got dehydrated on the plane and had to ride an ambulance to the hospital, and I'm thinking, oh, let's think of something a little bit different. Then he said, but his most favorite thing was to lay on the grass and look at the stars because in Beijing, you cannot see stars and you do not have grass. His second thing was that he loved cheer wine, soda with some pep to it, but no wine. He thought that was great. His shadow partner was a girl I happen to know, and I won't divulge her name, but when I read it, it made me real proud of my former Union Grove kid. But she said that Michael was exceptionally smart. On his first AP calculus test, he made 100, okay? So pretty smart kid. But she said, but then he could joke. He tried to teach her to write her name in Chinese. He was open to everything. And she said, but what I learned most is that as different as our backgrounds were, teenagers from all over the world are still the same, which kind of gave me goosebumps as a counselor. 14 parents of students who came also took the journey from Beijing to Iredale Stateful Schools. They stayed for 10 days, and it was one of my responsibilities to plan field trips every day. So they became my chicks, and I counted 14. I can't tell you how many times. But we went to Wake Forest, we went to Old Salem, we went to the schools, and they were amazed at our schools. They could not believe that students were given the freedom to choose some of their classes, to go into a library and choose their own book to read. They were just totally amazed. They were also amazed that every student, despite their disability, is allowed a free and appropriate education. When we got back on the bus, they had many questions about special needs kids that they saw, and I saw many parents tear up because thinking of students, I'm sure, from China who are not allowed that same opportunity. The parents not only did that, but our city arranged a government day because over there, the citizen is not very important. They asked many questions. We were finally kicked out of City Hall because they would have kept on asking questions. But then we went to the fire station. They climbed up in the engines. They put on the suits. They just totally enjoyed it. We had a Super Bowl party. They had never seen a football game. By the end, despite the results, they were all dabbing like our man. But anyway, Mr. Elliott and I, as of April the 1st, will both be Tower Bridge employees. We will both be on their payroll. They are also hiring a young lady named Vivian Sung, who is just graduating from the University of Maryland, who we've had the opportunity to work with to be a student advisor. They plan to send 40 to 50 students for the whole year. Our school system will be compensated for them being here in our schools. Mr. Elliott and I are also going on the TBI payroll to go to Beijing next week for two weeks to learn about the Tower Bridge program from their perspective. One of the things I'm most interested in is that some of the people from California who've been having this program for the last three years will be there, so hopefully we can learn some lessons from them as well as get the opportunity to see a part of the world that I've never experienced. To make this happen, we all have to be willing to take risks, and we do thank you for your support of this risk-taking adventure. And as our new adopted motto, stand tall, see far, we hope we can count on your continued support. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment that it was one of the most exciting events I've seen in the school system. Got to go to several events, including unloading the buses at Katz, and that kind of reminded me of herding cats. But to watch the young people mix together and all, just by the time you had the Valentine's Day dance, it was just amazing how they'd come out from their shells from that first day. And I talked to a lot of the parents, and I was amazed at the number of parents that hosted these children that did not have children in our school, including one couple I talked to that children go to private school, and they hosted these. And they were, their comments about our school system, they were just amazed. So it was really an event that transcended not only the cultures, but the people, and it made it so real to me to see the way these children reacted. And I, too, like to thank the school board for supporting this, and it was one of the best things, I think, we've done in a long time for our children. I look forward to bringing the kids over for a whole year. I think it'll just be a great experience for, not just them, but also for us. Thank you.
You have the comments? Again, on behalf of the board, thank you, too, for the work that you've done to help make this program successful, and thank you for taking your time to come tonight to give us a presentation. We appreciate it. Move next to item B, which is the Board of Education, meeting dates for 2016-17. Now, this is a voting item. Mr. Johnson?
Dr. Cash, members of the board, this is the amended calendar that was presented to you last week at your committee of the whole. And so if you'll notice, on July the 11th, that is a combined Cal and Board meeting to accommodate the 4th of July holiday, and then on September the 6th, that's a Tuesday meeting, which is rare for us, and that accommodates the Labor Day holiday. Be glad to answer any questions you might have about your proposed calendar for next school year.
Mr. Johnson? I have a que- I don't know if this is working or not, but anyway, I have a question and a comment. Earlier, when we made some changes in our schedule last year for this year, we looked at a couple of things. One was trying to have some of our closed session prior to the meeting in order to answer questions on personnel that were in our personnel report so we wouldn't have to, just like we're having today, put the personnel report off till later. I actually thought that worked well. We also wanted to have a common start time for our public meetings and have it at a time that the people from, the working people would be able to get there. And that was the main reason we wanted to move the start of the Cal meeting to 6:00. And I thought that also was successful. I would like to make a suggestion that we consider going on and starting the closed session for our Cal meeting at 5:00 and include the meal in that session. So we would go from 5:00 to whenever we would have, 5:45, whatever we needed. But I'd like to get the meal over with. That way, the staff, and I know they get off at 5:00, so they could just come right in. I think it's very interrupting in our meetings. It interrupts us a lot when we have 45 minutes, 30 to 45 minutes at 7:00, 7:15 for our meal. I think this could allow us to continue to do things we wanted to do, which was get the meeting started earlier, but not penalize the public by starting before 6:00 and have a continuous, both meetings start at 6:00. I'd like to put that up to my fellow board members to get their opinions.
Just a point of clarification, are you saying the schedule that's before us, you're just saying make sure we eat between 5:00 and 5:30, the same time that proposes to be our closed session time? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah.
Just keep the closed session time. My mic's kind of warm. Keep the closed session time starting at 5:00. And have that every Cal meeting. And then we also put the meal in there and do not start the official public meeting until 6:00. So both meetings start at 6:00, and that's confusing to the public. I actually think this would speed the session because once we break the meal, it seems like it's 45 minutes or so before we get all hurried back up and back into the meeting. I just think this would probably speed the process up and allows us to start both other meetings at the same time and give our people the more, 4:00, 5:00, more time to get there.
So you're proposing the schedule that's before us would change the time to 6:00 for every one of those times with the exception of the end of work year and that stuff?
For the public, open meeting.
That's right.
Yes, and we can continue.
And then the note down at the bottom, start at 5:00, 5:00 to 5:30 for the closed session still?
Yes, I have no change on the BO meeting, just on the Cal meeting. That way, we guide the 6:00 meeting to the public, and we would go ahead and start our closed session at 5:00 and include the meal at 5:00. From 5:00 to 6:00, we would do our closed session and our meeting.
Would you like to make that in a motion? I'd be glad to second it.
Mr. Chairman, I may add a motion, please.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
I just had a question because I know there was an issue with our attorney being able to be there for the closed session items that early. How's that going to affect? It's going to be better for you. Okay.
You start at 7:00. Start at 7:00, okay. The city council starts at 7:00.
We don't want to belabor all this again, and I think that's a good idea. There's no problem there. Start at 5:00. You're saying start at 5:00 and have a meal start at 5:00, and if there's a closed session, that's when we do it? Is that what we're saying? And then the regular meeting would start at 6:00, and the regular meeting on the second Monday would start at 6:00. Correct? That's correct. Could I add an amendment that we go back to real food instead of sandwiches?
Good for the second. For the second.
Yes.
That's nothing as friendly.
Okay, that's fine. We would say that was a friendly amendment.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion?
I just need clarification. So for the Cal, closed session slash meal starts at 5:00?
Yes. Between 5:00 and 6:00.
The Cal, the open session begins when?
6:00.
For Cal?
Yes, but that way, we get the same time about the public, and if they don't get off at 5:00 or anything, they don't have a chance to get there.
Any other clarification or questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
What's happening?
Next, we have item C, the Engage Grant. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir. Dr. Cash, members of the board, last year, we did apply for a grant with the U.S. Department of Education that we called Engage. Unfortunately, we did not receive that grant, but we did receive very strong feedback from the grant evaluators, so we have been encouraged to resubmit that grant. As you know, we use a company called Research Associates, and they are willing to resubmit the grant for us at no cost. This grant will serve Statesville Middle School, Statesville High School, West Iredale Middle School, West Iredale High School, North Middle, and North Iredale High School. It is a $3 million grant. The work that will be done by this grant will support a lot of initiatives that align with student services and provide not only additional staff in the schools, but will also do a lot of training with staff in issues that surround supporting student engagement and working in the area of student services. So we're just asking your permission tonight to resubmit this grant for a second consideration, and of course, there is no cost to the district to do this.
Make a motion that we submit this grant, resubmit this grant at this time. We've seen these letters a lot of times. Anything we can do to help them would be greatly appreciated.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Do we have a timetable on the 20th day of the award and grant?
We should hear back from this before the end of summer.
So year one would be this kind of school year?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have item D, the middle school baseball, softball proposal. This is a voting item as well. Mr. Armstrong?
Dr. Cash, members of the board, the Iredale Stateful Schools is only one of a few school systems in the state that do not have baseball and softball in our middle schools. We did create a task force to look at the feasibility of having a program for our district. And after much discussion with the committee and with the principals, athletic directors, we've decided to use the 16-17 school year to prepare to roll out baseball and softball in our middle schools during the 17-18 school year. That would give us time to get facilities and equipment, those type things, and place coaches so that we can have a first-class program for 7th and 8th graders in the 17-18 school year.
Well, then, I have a question here as to what we're deciding, whether we're deciding that we're going to have the programs and we're going to have it then, or we're deciding not to have the programs until you decide when you can put them on the field?
No, just you're deciding whether you'll go with the plan, getting ready for, getting ready next year, and then rolling it out 17-18. We're asking you to support that.
I'll make a motion that we accept the task force recommendation and the staff's to follow the 2016-17 school year to prepare and start with the students in 2017 to 18. to follow the twenty sixteen-seventeen school year to prepare and start with the students in twenty seventeen-eighteen.
Have a motion, second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask for a friendly amendment or just amendment. I would like to include that this includes our direction to do this in two thousand seventeen-eighteen, that it includes that the providing necessary funding and appropriate practice facilities at each middle school campus, or providing free transportation to nearby practice facilities for the teams.
Well, those are, those are ques- excuse me, but those are questions, I assume there's an out here. If we go, if we say we wanna have these baseball, softball teams next year, and the task force starts looking at it and things like he's just mentioned, the fields aren't ready, the transportation isn't ready, the coaches aren't in place, they quit selling baseballs, whatever, we would not do it at that time. So I'm assuming there's an out that could happen.
No, we feel like the best situation is to prepare all of next, this coming school year, this fall, start preparing this fall for seventeen-eighteen. But I agree with Mr. Page, there could be some things that may not get done.
No, I want to make sure they're done.
Okay.
I want the boards to mandate that they're done.
Okay. All right, well, I appreciate that.
To say, we are gonna provide the funding and we are gonna provide proper facilities that are used.
And transportation.
Some of these schools may need to transport somewhere near their facility for the practice. I don't wanna have to charge those schools to use buses if they have to do that. I want the school board to say, we're gonna make this happen two thousand seventeen-eighteen. And that's what I'm asking for now, is that we don't just say we wanna do it, we say we are gonna do it and we will provide what we need for this to happen.
But if we say we are gonna provide what we need for this to happen at this time without a plan outlined, to me, that's a pig in a poke. I don't know what that entails. I don't have any idea how much it could be to do that by next year. I mean, is that, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to stand in the way of the baseball, softball. I just, at this point, we're saying we're gonna have the programs. But to say like this, that we will do this, we'll do that, we'll do something else, that could entail a budget item that we might not be able to handle totally.
We will be able to handle. That's what the task force, we looked at the feasibility and what it would cost. So there is, there is cost, and working with facilities and planning, they can, they can do the work. But it is going to cost.
And maybe I'll make an assumption that if they're gonna plan next year, they're gonna be coming back to us about this time next year saying, here what our costs are, 'cause it's gonna have to go in our budget somewhere. We're gonna have to consider it somewhere. And whatever those costs are, whether transportation, equipment, you know, field restoration, whatever those items are, we would know. We're just, we're voting to give them the charge to move forward next year with their planning. And obviously, if they come in here and say it's gonna take $10 million, we're gonna vote against it. I'm just, I mean, we can't afford it.
Okay, so that, okay, so that could be an out, and I'm not looking for outs. I'm just saying. I, I don't wanna blanket plan and somebody come up with a plan that we're gonna transport back and forth with charter buses out of wherever. I mean, I just wanna know what we're planning to do before we say we're gonna fund what we're planning to do.
We're planning to get fields ready for practices and to play at the middle schools. That's what we're planning. And also, there may be some instances where some middle schools, there may not be a field available. They may have to be transported somewhere else to play. You're talking about baseball and softball, so they all can't practice sometimes on the same field just because it just, they won't have lighting.
And I don't know what the proper order is here. I would be glad to accept a friendly amendment that the task force consider transportation and the items that Mr. Page has brought up. Or I'll second his as a motion. It's up to y'all. Would you take that? Anna, do you have the second?
Anna has a second.
Would you accept that as a friendly thing, that they look at that when they're, when the task force is preparing their-
State it one more time. State the, state the motion and how it would be amended.
To me, I'll restate as best I can. English is not my favorite language. The, I was, yes, correct. I said, my motion is to accept the task force recommendation and the staffs to prepare next year what it's gonna take to implement this for the 2017, 2018 year. And please make sure and include transportation and other costs outside of equipment and fields.
And I can have that available for you all next month if you like, 'cause we have those numbers. I can bring it to the next Cal meeting in April.
And we're gonna need to know that to see what impact it has to our budget.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Sometime, those numbers need to be there. That's all I'm saying.
Yes.
I wanna see the numbers before I say, oh, yeah, we're gonna do that.
I understand.
So, Mr. Armstrong, are you saying you have the numbers? You have the plan?
Just, this is a ballpark, and that's, you know, ballparks are scary sometimes. But right now, we're thinking just preparing fields, just in capital, about 150,000, and just in resources, buying equipment, probably another 50,000.
And how many schools are you?
We're talking about all, all of our middle schools plus the two IB schools. So we're talking nine of our schools. And the Mooresville Grade It also wants, they wanna be part of, the Mooresville Grade It Middle School wants to be part of the league also.
I thought the IB students, middle school students, went back to their feeder.
No, they want their own, they're, they're all, they're, right now, they've already, like Mountmore, they already have a cross-country team. But the IB principals have, their, their plans have always been, when they could, to have some of teams on their campuses. So they want to be part of the baseball program, Northview and Mount, Mountmore. They were part of that task force, and they want to have their own teams, want to field their own teams. In baseball, you gotta remember, you don't, you don't have as many. So if you eliminate schools, you're gonna eliminate students participating in baseball. So the more schools willing to have baseball teams, the more participants you would have in baseball and softball. But you're gonna eliminate students if you say you have to go and play at this school. They don't have as many chances to make a team if you cut out two teams.
Let's just make sure we're in order.
All right.
'Cause I'm not sure we are.
Okay.
We'll make sure we have a second to that amended motion before we have further discussion. Anna, do you?
So, so Charles accepted the friendly amendment, and then I need to accept it as well. And I'm okay, I'm okay with what you said, if that's an issue.
I made the motion, so you're accepting, that you're doing the second and with that friendly-
You need to debate the amendment, vote on the amendment.
I was gonna say, that's what I thought. Yeah, you make, you either vote on the amendment or by itself, or you can, you can vote on the motion with the friendly amendment as one motion. And I thought that's what I was voting on.
I think that's correct. You made, you amended your motion friendly. I mean, I guess that's what we're trying to define. What that means, we didn't do a formal amended motion. He just changed the motion. If you agree, as a second, is how I understand.
I'm, I'm okay with that. Charles, are you okay with that?
Surely.
Okay.
Then we don't need the-
You just modified the motion for-
That's right.
I'd like to clarify what my point was. I attended one of the meetings.
Yes, sir.
And as most things that happen to governments, we have unfounded mandates. We tell people to do something, and they worry. I know the principals are concerned. They're saying, well, are we gonna get hung with cost for this? Is that gonna end up costing us at our school? I want to make sure that the principals understand that they're not gonna have to pay for the field improvements and the equipment to start baseball with, that if our boards will support this, I think we've gotta say, we're gonna support it. They need to be assured that they're not gonna come down and have to use money they make off football or money they get it, if something else is gonna be used out of their budget to buy the stuff to get baseball started with. I think, that's all I'm asking, is commitment from the board. If we tell them to do it, that we're gonna back them, and we are gonna help finance. I think it'll take some fears away from some of the middle school principals. I personally hope they'll try to do it this year. I can understand. They're very worried about things like this. And I think that was my point, was trying to make sure that the principals knew we were planning on footing the bill for getting baseball and softball in to these schools. Considering we're one of the very few in the state that doesn't have it, I think it's very important that we include this in our offerings for our students.
Is this something we do as well? Do we do the same thing for the soccer teams, the football teams, the lacrosse teams? Is that, do I understand we don't do that for those teams, Martin, or is this?
I don't know. They're already existing.
I know. I mean, do we, do we provide those services, you know, transportation?
Mr. Page is talking about just getting it off the ground.
Correct.
So for how long?
Stain themselves. You know, just getting the equipment to get them started.
Okay, so are, so are we saying until it gets off the ground, we will be doing the transportation or?
Just to get the program going. I'm not looking at, at maintaining the program.
Sustain, well-
Just to get, 'cause they need some work on the fields. They're gonna need some backstops. They're obviously gonna need a little bit of equipment. Most of the equipment is gonna be very minor, as far as balls and that sort of stuff. But I think we've got to, and then there's a transportation issue. Give, 'cause they're gonna play at the high schools, which I think is a great thing. It gives the kids to play under the lights at the, at the big school. They're also worried about having to pay transportation. We're not gonna have many fields that are game quality fields at our, at our middle schools. They'll be practice fields. I think Lake Shore probably's got a game quality field in Troutman.
Yeah, there were a couple, two or three. Mountmore, Mountmore, he actually would be able to play.
Yeah, that have game, game quality fields. So we're gonna have to use most of those. Another interesting thing is both recreation partners, the city of Statesville and our county are backing this change. And we have offered all their facilities to the schools for use free of charge, you know, if we need any of their facilities. I just wanna make sure that the principals are comfortable that we're not gonna pass the buck to them on getting this program up and running.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion?
So we're still in discussion mode. I would, I would feel more comfortable having some figures in front of us about what schools and what their needs, the individual needs, and approximate costs.
I can bring that, I can bring that in April. Yes, I can, I could apply that to you.
I don't know how we would do it in reference to what we're supposed to do, but at that point, I would like to separate those two motions because we don't have those figures. Like she says, I don't have the figures. We just, we've just been looking at a budget. And if you're telling me the cost to start up and what they need to start baseball, softball is $325, that's not bad. But when you throw out $150,000 or maybe another 50, that runs into bucks somewhere that has to come from. So I, I still, I can say, yes, okay, you can go ahead and see what it takes to come up with baseball and softball for next year. I can vote on that, no problem, get it going. But to say that we're gonna fund that with an open checkbook, I don't have any idea what that is. I don't know, I don't know what any of that is. I know that there are some things that we have in place and other things that we do not have in place. And I've ventured to guess, there are a lot of things that somebody has not even thought about yet that will cost us money. I wanna see what those costs are before I say we are going to openly back that program.
I think the thing I wanna make sure you understand, my motion is to accept the task force recommendation. And what does it say? Task force has created, look at the feasibility of offering these two programs during that year. So that's what I, my motion is for them to move forward checking on the feasibility. That doesn't mean we're gonna do it. That doesn't mean we're not gonna do it. That means we, they've got to, their charge is to bring us back the feasibility of being able to do it.
Right.
Includes those numbers, includes transportation that maybe they hadn't addressed in these numbers, even the ones you already have.
I'll tell you, that task force with all those, they thought of everything. I can bring you the numbers. And what I gave you was what came out of, 'cause I've been involved in all three of them.
I think we're saying the same thing then. What he's saying, what she's saying is the same, the same thing I'm saying. We need numbers.
That's not what the-
What he's saying is that he wants the numbers in with this, and I think we should separate them at this time.
That's, that's not what the motion is though now, Mr. Kelly.
I understand. That's what I'm saying.
The amendment incorporate-
I don't understand what the protocol is.
Well, the original amendment, I mean, the original motion is, I think, what you wanted. Mr. Page has gone a step beyond that, which is, in a way, not to put words in your mouth, Mr. Page, but basically, whatever it costs, we're gonna get it done. Now, it's, it seems to be there's some sentiment to find out what those numbers are. So you could go ahead and approve, I mean, you could do anything. You can postpone the vote till next month and just get the numbers and then discuss it and resolve it, or you can, you know, you can give them the assurance that they can move forward and still bring the numbers back next time. And you could, you could vote to delay both, I mean, work on the feasibility, implement the programs in seventeen-eighteen, subject to, you know, budgetary approval. But, I mean, right now, the motion is, and I think, I don't know if Mr. Page is, it appears there is some, some concern on the part of all of the principals that, yeah, you'll say, do it, but you find the money out of your budget. And some of them might have it, some of them might not have it.
I understand that.
But I can also understand the concern of the board that until you know what the numbers are, you don't wanna just give a blank checkbook, I think somebody mentioned.
Well, I meant, it was never intended to be a blank checkbook. I thought we would just tell them that we, we supported it. I withdraw my motion and we'll just move on.
Well, the friendly amendment to that, to me, took is-
I withdraw my amendment.
Oh, yeah, but I was asking, I was asking you to include that in the feasibility to make sure that you were including transportation and other costs if you had not.
It's all been, yes, all been.
That's what I'm saying. So I was just reiterating it, not saying it was, we were for it. For a point of clarification.
Withdraw the motion, withdraw the second and go to the first one? So what we're doing?
I, I second, I withdraw.
Okay.
Did I second?
Then you're gonna bring us the numbers back next month.
If he would like to withdraw the motion. Then we're back to the original, where I just said I support what the task force recommendation was to look at the feasibility of doing this for the 2017 eighteen year.
Didn't you second that?
That was the very first motion.
I call for the question.
Hold those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have an out-of-district attendance update, and this is a voting item as well.
All right, well, each year, we look at the people assignment office. We look at the number of out-of-district students in each of our schools. And currently, there are no elementary or middle schools that are closed for out-of-district students. And we feel pretty confident there shouldn't be any closed this coming school year for sixteen-seventeen. South Iredale High School has been placed on a watch list for signing out-of-district students. And Lake Norman High School is listed as closed, and that's what we would like to go with this entire, ask you to vote on not having any of our middle and high, our elementary or middle schools closed. But we'll have South Iredale High School on a watch list and Lake Norman considered closed for, for out-of, for out-of-district pupils.
Mr. Armstrong, I don't think about the list. I don't see Troutman Elementary listed on here.
Not sure why. Some of them are not on there because this was the list that, um-
It's all, everybody, all twenty, it's 28 schools. We need 29. The elementary school's not on there.
It is not, and I'm not sure why.
It's not, it's not out of compliance as far as taking, getting your kids?
No, we have, we have, a lot of students wanna get to Troutman Elementary, so it should be on there. I'm not sure why it didn't, why it's not there.
And one question I should ask last week, and I just thought about it. What is the capacity for Lake Norman High School, and where are we now?
Eighteen fifty brick school. And it's at eighteen twenty-four, probably. That's exactly, somewhere just slightly south of that capacity.
And the same thing for South? Where are we?
South, current capacity is listed at about fifteen hundred and sixty. I think he is very close to that number, somewhere fifteen or equally rated.
And that's why we consider them a watch list. We, very careful, we, we will look at the leadership team when we have out-of-district requests. We look at those students carefully to make sure, before we place them there because we know that South is fast approaching capacity.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Uh, question about, does that include the mega units?
It does not. However, there are many ways you look at capacity. You can look at maximum capacity, state rated or pre-propriated capacity, or optimum capacity. And the principal many times will look at optimum, because there's a lot of factors involved when you get a capacity. So what typically happens, optimum's gonna be less than that number that I gave you. So the principals, if you ask the principal if they're overcrowded, they'll probably say yes. At Lake Norman and at South Iredale, uh, they'll probably say, you know, very close, because they're looking at that optimum. And that, that means that you're, what you're doing is you're, you're counting the classrooms based on the number shooting in rather than the maximum number that they could be in, if you want to say. So they're optimum. They may have an easy classroom and a classroom that can only have fifteen kids in. But on our capacity number, we're gonna count it twenty-five. So there's gonna be a little bit of a difference there.
So do you know how many of the classrooms there are in the mega units or not?
Lake Norman has, most of, both of those mega units are empty. There are a couple of the driver's in class, and I think one other class is a mega unit. Uh, there's fourteen classrooms in there. I'd say twelve are probably empty or being used or, or, believe it in place because of the overcrowding in, at Lake Norman.
I have a, um, my concern is these, the numbers that we were just given, they're basically about the same. So why, why would you close Lake Norman and not close South Iredale?
If you would like, it's a board, but we feel like, you know, we're, we're basically in the same position we were last year with their attendance, and it was on a watch list last year. So we hadn't, we didn't see the need to close it because their attendance has been pretty consistent.
It would be looking at growth as well, with acceleration of growth. And Lake Norman has social potential for an overnight explosion of growth. So you've gotta be very careful there. South Iredale, most of their growth, most of their overcrowding is due to the IB program. And that IB program has been stabilized at a certain number. Uh, they have a limitation on how many they can take a six open entry. So what's happened is the IB program in South has actually drawn down just a little bit. So the, the factors involved are a little bit different. Plus, we have the, like, expansions that could be taking place next year in South Iredale. So, so South Iredale, if you wanna put them in closure for a year, it might be okay. But then they're gonna have to send capacity out of that because of the access classes for that site.
Well, I, and, and just to, um, the one hundred and seven, um, out of district students for South Iredale, that does not include the IB students. Is that correct?
I'm not sure. I think, I think they do with that many.
Is?
Probably not.
You don't think?
Uh, I think that IB students are included in that because that's their, their school, um, county, instead of what they do nationally. And y'all have been through problems in you, in those. I don't think it does, because I think the IB program in South offices something around four or five more kids and a good portion of those. Yeah, they include that, it's about five hundred and seven.
Hundred and seven out of district.
Those hundred and seven out of district, I would say, Mr. Armstrong, probably five hundred.
I, uh, I would say that the students that show up on your report are the kids that have legitimately filled out an application, leaving one of our other high schools to go to South. It also includes the kids that have exited IB but wish to stay their junior and senior year.
Right.
Yeah, that's probably something different.
Because you've.
Except for the, now the county students.
Yeah, we, yeah, we know that.
Out of district. Did I say out of county? I'm sorry, out of district.
Okay, I think you, I took it as out of district is what you were saying.
It was out of district.
But, uh, what Mr. Johnson said about students exiting that program, we've always, well, the administration has given them an opportunity to stay if they like.
Well, I guess my number, the number's one oh, one hundred and seven, uh, for South, and then compare it to Lake Norman High, which is twenty-seven out of district students. And then you've got the capacity in actual about the same for both of them. So my, my concern is, you know, I just don't understand why you didn't recommend to close both of them. That's just my concern.
Okay.
Other questions, comments?
I would say, um, it would be very easy for us with the availability of the classes in the mega units to open up Lake Norman to a limited degree for a year and see what happened. Because we are getting, going to have some competition at one of the charter schools now for high school students on that end of the county. So rather than closing South, I would say if we're gonna change this recommendation, I'd like to open up Lake Norman and see what happens for a year.
We're only talking about out of, out of district students here, aren't we? We're not talking about in general. I mean, the, the growth could be at Lake Norman overnight and.
It could be, and that's why we're being cautious. There's more, there's just more residential construction on that end of the county than in Troutman.
But we could make that recommendation if that should occur.
Or you could say, let's put both schools on a watch list and take it on a case by case basis.
Yeah, can you explain to us the difference between being closed and being on a watch list?
Being closed, basically, we just don't accept any applications if you're out of district. And then on the watch list, you know, if there's a, a strong enough reason to transfer a student, we would work with, um, the principals of both schools, and we would do what was best for that student. And I'm not saying that wouldn't happen at Lake Norman. We, you know, we're always gonna look at what's, what's best for the student. But we basically will tell people that Lake Norman High School is closed, and they don't even apply to, to go out of district to Lake Norman. But we, they will apply to go to South Iredale, but we tell them, you know, the chances are not real high. We have to look at it real carefully. Their reasons have to be really good, because everyone has to write a reason for why they want to transfer. They have to include that with their application.
I trust your judgment on this.
Yeah, it has to be compelling. It's tough. It's a, it's a, it's a tough job and, you know, and, uh, but the principals are excellent to work with. Uh, they look at it, case by case. We look at attendance, you know, their, their academics and discipline profiles.
There are no other discussion. We need a motion to either accept this list or, uh, with the recommendations, or we can, uh, reject it with amendments, or we can just reject it and ask the administration to go back and rethink it.
I would make a motion, yeah, I would make a motion that we accept Mr. Armstrong's out of district attendance, um, recommendations.
Second.
Motion and a second, uh, Mr. Kelly. Uh, any further discussion?
Well, I, I, I'm interested in what Mr. Johnson had suggested about maybe putting Lake Norman on the watch list rather than just, uh, close it, just to see what, what does happen down in South. I'm not sure why, maybe we, I don't think they're even crowded in South Iredale.
It's, it's crowded. It, like, Lake Norman's extremely crowded when you, when you speak into the administration. And I know that the classes are, you know, pretty large. Some of those classes are very large at Lake Norman. It's just a tough decision.
We have a motion and a second, uh, if there are other discussion, uh, ask for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have the, um, out of dis- uh, see, the classified pay table revisions. Uh, Dr. Lassane, Ms. Gillian, Ms. White.
Good evening, Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, members of the board. We discussed the classified pay table revisions last week at the committee of the whole meeting extensively. We've provided some additional, um, written information, um, for you here and are here to answer any additional questions that may be left over from that meeting. We are asking for your actual approval so that we can, um, move forward with the work with other areas. I would also like to say that since the last, um, meeting, just to give you an update, we, um, shared with you information on specific area meetings that we would have to communicate this information to employees. We have also decided that we are gonna create a video and have that posted to allow some more, um, flexibilities as well as working on a portal for employees to submit questions that they may have. And we will just add that to our frequently asked questions so that we can have that as an ongoing communication tool. So as soon as we're able to get that done, that will be posted to the website, and we invite you to review that information as well to keep, as to keep up with, uh, frequently asked questions that may, um, provide some information, um, for you.
I thought it was looking real good. Uh, a couple of questions. As far as our classified people, when they like a bus garage or, uh, some of these people that have the, that are licensed or can get certifications, do we do, uh, any advancement in pay? Uh, if somebody gets a different license or, uh, in the case of the bus garage, if those guys get national certifications, ASC certifications or whatever, is there a bump in pay for those type of things?
There are some in the maintenance world, but outside of that, I, I can't think of any readily off the top of my head.
Uh, we do have a professional incentive and it's based on that, it's your certification. In some cases, we have to have those to do the work. So in some cases, we have, uh, certifications, training, uh, licenses, that we do a professional incentive. It's a monthly incentive, but we do pay cap on it because obviously you're getting out some money.
Go ahead and get a hundred certifications, yeah, I got it. But I mean, if you meet someone that's certified pesticide or something like that, and they get that certification, they become a bagger to you. So that, that is a good place.
Yes, it helps us internalize some of the work.
Uh, one other question. The steps, the five-year, uh, and if you wanna stay and leave, the cool rate increases every five years. Now, this is gonna be for all three of the, uh, bus drivers, PAs.
Correct.
But that'd be about everybody. Will there be, uh, I guess I got my question. Uh, I always get said I ask a lot of questions. Uh, when y'all come to us with, uh, wanting to raise people's salaries, uh, especially classified, so they, are you gonna ask us for instead of a certain amount, that a step move, this person needs to be placed here?
Well, when we look at relevant, um, increases for people, they would have to be paced, placed somewhere on this table so it would be aligned to a step on the pay table. But it has to have some justification.
Right now, I think, and I'm not in a closed session, but I know we talked about it in the classified review, a salary review committee, when we talk, when we get to a dollar amount, it's always based on moving them to this step and this grade. So that's already been factored in, and maybe they're just bringing to you the dollar amount. But that dollar amount has arrived based on where they would place on the new, on the table. Does that make sense?
And we had a little bit of this discussion. Do supervisors have input on where their employees are placed in the pay table?
Sal- setting salary is a function of human resources. And if we had every department set their own salaries, then we would probably have even more disparity than some of the things that we are trying to clean up right now. And so we always take recommendations. The supervisors have, um, lots of input as far as the job description, what functions they have and all of that. They submit that, and then we have to do comparisons. We have to look at where we are on our scale. We have to compare employees across departments. And so that is a function of human resources, setting salary.
Is there a process of, uh, appeal on that supervisor gives?
Well, I, every supervisor will go straight to the superintendent if they don't like anything that, that we submit or, or anything like that, and they'll come back, and we bring all of our relevant information and share our comparisons and everything that we've done. So is that a set process? No, um, but it's pretty much the nature of how things go.
Well, they do have some, some way to go about it. Because I really think that supervisors know more about what's going, they, and, and I wish they had a budget to work within, and.
And that's why they have that input in the job description so that we align. We have a lot more experience in setting, um, salary across the whole organization. Because otherwise, you can have one who would recommend very, very high salaries based on whatever they derive within their department, and it could be very much another director who's trying to be very frugal, and then you end up with disadvantaged employees.
Well, I think it needs to be a combination of both. I just wanna make sure our supervisors have input in where their employees are placed on the, uh, scale. It's not a lot of work in this, but I thought it looked really, really good. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have the, um, vote tonight?
Yes, we need to, uh, have a motion to approve if that's the board's direction.
Mr. Johnson, I move if we accept the classified pageable.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here now, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Yeah, that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll move, uh, on to item G, the school start and end times for twenty sixteen, seventeen. Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. The North Carolina Department of Public Instruction requires one hundred and eighty days or a thousand twenty-five hours of instruction for all students each year. Currently, Presley students meet for five hours and forty minutes per week. As a result, we are five hours under the required meeting times. We're currently looking at adding seven to fifteen minutes per day to the school day for the sixteen, seventeen school year. If we make this change, every school will exceed our thousand twenty-five hours requirement. So I'm coming to the board tonight to make a recommendation that we add ten minutes to the school day at each level for the sixteen, seventeen school year. We add it to the end of the school day to make sure we have enough time in, in case of bad weather. And with the late start that we have this coming school year on August twenty-ninth, we could run into not having the required number of hours if we, if the weather's bad. So I'm bringing a recommendation of adding ten additional minutes to the school day at each level to the board tonight.
Is that what this chart reflects?
Yes, seven, ten, and fifteen minutes.
Uh, two, two comments. One, uh, I've been trying to figure out how we're getting two different title numbers of figures. I think it just got a moment. Are we not going to one hundred and eighty-five days now?
It's a hundred and eighty days.
Are we still a hundred and eighty or one hundred and eighty-five?
We, we attend a hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty.
That's how many days we have.
How many days we go, a thousand twenty-five hours, those are two, either one you have to require of reaching.
I'm just wondering why we can't add to Presley, Monticello without adding to the other schedule?
Because of the, the way the, the buses are scheduled to get there. Those buses, and someone asked a question about Presley, why it takes so long. Well, a student goes to Presley, they'll leave home, and they'll actually go to a, they're shuttled to a high school or their home school, and then they shuttle to Monticello and from Monticello to Presley. So those students are on the bus. And we started, uh, any, we, we wouldn't start any earlier because they would really be on the bus a long time, uh, in the mornings to be out. uh in the mornings, would be out uh before daylight. And so Presley has always been our day where, because it's taken so long to get students there because of the way our buses run, so that's why Presley has always been our shortest day, and we base what we do on Presley's schedule.
We've already got our middle schools for seven hours, someone said, ours fifteen minutes. What did Presley say about us?
They, they're all for it, they like, the more time together, the better. We brought it up at the principals' meeting. Anytime you have more time for instruction, who, no one would turn that down.
High schools don't feel like it's gonna be a problem with uh.
No, the high school, high school principals were in the meetings also. I know in Guilford County, I know has nothing to do with this, but high schools in Guilford County started at eight forty-five, and my students can get out to three forty-five. Now, you talk about nightmares with spring sports, that was a nightmare.
This table is the current table, right, Mister Armstrong?
Yes, sir.
This what we'll be using?
Yes, if you look at, and then you look, if you look at the ten minutes.
Right.
We're looking at the next, the last column, your proposal.
Yes, Miss Haynes.
And you're gonna add it to the end of the day?
The end of the day, that's the proposal. But the principals, yeah, the principals were uh very much in favor of it.
The starting end time, though, on this schedule is what we'll have, right? When we add those ten?
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes, sir. Say, if you add, like Celeste Hinkle, a year from now, their dismissal time would be two twenty-five. Central would be two fifteen.
Well, I move um that we accept the recommendation by Mister Armstrong to add ten additional minutes um for next school year.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Here now, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
We should have item H, the calendar update for this school year, uh, Ms. Wildberg.
Thank you. Uh, last Monday, I gave you a memo regarding that fifth day that we lost due to weather and how the board would address that for our students. We will be using the last, the Friday.